This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. This is the May 9th Ordinance Meeting for City Council. I'm Connie Denham, Councilor Denham, and just want to welcome everybody. I'm really happy that folks are here to be able to talk about the specialized Opt-In code. And just for purposes, so everyone in the room knows who's here, I just want to allow everyone to introduce themselves. Again, so I'm Connie Denham. I'm the Chair of the Committee.
I'm Pam Ralph Smith. I'm on the committee's list.
Scalen Derby, Ordinance Committee.
I'm Connie Dawson. I'm on the Energy Advisory Committee.
I'm Cassie Trager. I'm the Eastern Conservation Agent.
Jamie Webb, Senior Planner. You asked me to be here.
Yeah, I did. Chris, would you like to introduce yourself? Oh, now you're muted.
Chris Mason, Regional Coordinator for Western Mass for the Green Communities Program, Department of Energy Resources.
Great. And Bill, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Bill Foerter. I'm with Performance Systems Development. We are the Mass Save vendor for the Energy Code Education Program.
Great, thanks. And I'm not sure who's the other person online. If you don't say anything, that's fine, but do you want to introduce yourself? Take that as a no.
You're muted if you're not sure.
Yeah. All right, so we're just gonna... And Salem's...
Is that me? Yeah, it's because I'm trying out this audio right now.
Oh, okay. All right, great. So what we've been talking about is the Opt-In Specialized Code. And I think we had a really great conversation last time. It really kind of helped us discern some of the distinctions between the the Opt-In code and, no, I'm forgetting the other one now, the Stretch Code. And that you. And so I think that it took some time, but I think there was some confusion around that, et cetera. But I think we kind of understood, began to understand the distinctions. This week, I've had numerous meetings with folks from the Valley CDC. They are supportive of the city and moving forward with this. They recognize that there will be some upfront costs. But they were supportive. They recognize that this is the direction that people are going in, and they want to be supportive of that. I also had the opportunity to speak with Julia from Community Builders, who was here at the last meeting, just to follow up with her and check in to make sure that she was clear about the Specialized Code. They are doing a lot of work to be able to support green communities, support kind of the direction that most communities are going into in terms of combating climate change, global warming, and trying to become energy efficient. Also, they recognize that there will be costs, and they're doing what they can in order to be able to be passive house, right? Their construction is being passive house. But they also recognize that, and this would be a great conversation for Bill and Chris to maybe talk about, is that, in fact, there are different ways that you can get to passive house, right? There's not just one way of being able to do that. And so I think one of their concerns was, is it going to limit our ability to be able to kind of get to where we want, or can we continue to kind of get there in the ways that we can? So that was some of those conversations, and I come to this. But Salem, you were going, just so we can follow up with everybody, you were going to check in with the school reuse folks? Did you, were you able to have a conversation?
I believe you just let Kevin in right now. So I did, I did reach out to Kevin and let him know that we were discussing this, and so it was on his radar.
Okay, perfect, great. So Kevin, welcome. Do you want to introduce yourself, Kevin?
Hi, I'm Kevin Perry from Five Star Building Corp. How are you?
Great. Thanks for, thanks for being here. So want to, Connie, before we go, I saw you put your hand up. Did you have a question?
Only, I think it'd be useful if Chris would... Passive house is one of the ways to fulfill the requirements of the Specialized Code, but it's not the only way. Passive house is a very specific designation. I just wanted to, but I'm sure Chris can explain that better than I can.
Yeah. So Cassie, I want to turn it over to you, because you've been communicating with Chris. And so I just want to, and I know that Chris is here and Bill is here, but kind of just want to bring the rest of us up to speed to that communication. And I know that you would reach down and ask him some questions, and so just want to kind of give you the floor to be able to discuss that, yeah.
Yes. So I, from my notes from last meeting, again, which I agree was very helpful and productive for me understanding what the concerns were. They seem to boil down to kind of three main things. One was, you know, how would this impact these three major projects that are underway? One being the Ferry Street redevelopment project, then one being 385 Main Street, which is with the, it was like community buildings.
Community builders.
Striving earlier, and how they had the concerns about the passive house. And then the last one was the school reuse buildings that were really important, how those were going to be reused. So I was able to give a brief description of those projects to Chris. And it seems like, you know, some of the concerns, like for Mike Leachon, he noted specific concerns around cost and having to buy these specialized equipment, like the windows. And for 385 Main Street, it seemed like the concern was around, you know, they're already striving to achieve these really green initiatives. Like, is this going to be something that's going to be making it even harder for them to get there when they're already trying to do a good thing? Like passive house achieving that. And then for the school reuse, the concern was, you know, these projects, the city has been very intentional in how they want those to be reused and the way that they want them to be done. Even though it might not be new construction, so to speak, it will be a pretty intensive redevelopment in that reuse process. So it might actually trigger the new construction piece. So will they apply? Does the new construction have to meet these requirements? Are they already meeting these requirements anyways? So it's not clear. So that was one piece of it, those specific projects. The other piece was that a potential middle ground would be voting to adopt the Specialized Code, but not yet having it implemented until a date certain in the future, so that these projects would have time to adjust or maybe even be underway, like, or that would take it back. While the documentation I was seeing was saying six to 12 months recommended, but it's not clear how far we could go with that. What is the limit in terms of putting it off?
Right, right.
In the view adopted. And then the last piece, just as a reminder, is that my case, we're trying to get it adopted on a faster timeline, is that I'm thinking it'd be very advantageous for the city to go for the Climate Leader Designation. The first opportunity to do so will be in July. And that will line up really nicely with us having finished the Climate Action Plan and then going for the grant funding that would be available to us only if we get that designation. Most importantly, in my opinion, is that there may be funding for a new building coordinator position, which we're really critical for executing the Climate Action Plan.
Sure.
And so, yeah, I guess the answer to those questions, I'll turn it to Chris, because if he was able to, and bring Bill along, who's an expert.
Yep, great. Thank you for that. And Chris, before I turn to you and Bill, I just also want to, in terms of the school reuse, an element that came up was those buildings are historic. And so how then are they impacted by the Opt-In Specialized Code as well? So hopefully, you might be able to speak to that. I know I just kind of brought that up as a conversation point. But want to kind of turn it over to you to, to kind of give us your take and your thoughts to kind of help provide us with additional information that would help us to make this decision.
Okay, I'll start by giving kind of a broad overview of the three projects that you guys are talking about. So, and Bill, I believe I'm gonna, you're gonna agree, is everybody still there?
Yeah, we're here. I think you're sharing your, I don't know how to share, oops.
No, your video just turned offline. It says offline, so made me wonder. I can't see you anymore.
The camera's doing something weird.
Yeah, try the camera options in.
Is there a sharing option where I can share a screen?
Yeah, it's on here. On the bot, on the bot, on the bottom, do you see the little arrow in the box? It says present now?
Yeah, I said, you're not allowed to share your screen. It's grayed out. I think you have to get permission.
Yep, hang on just one.
If you go to his video, oh, yeah, there too. There's three dots.
Yep, Chris Mason, pin screen, add as co-host.
Okay, there it is. Now I just have to...
And our camera's turned off.
Yep. I'm not sure why it's turned off. I have it on. Oh, there it is.
Where's the other week? The wires are a little loose.
Yeah. I also use, this is my computer, so.
Okay. Okay, so you guys can see the slide with the pre-slide, I'm assuming?
Um, yep.
Okay, yeah, pretty good. So I have a much larger presentation here, but I'm not going to give it. I'm going to focus in on the Specialized Code as it differs from the Opt-In, as it differs from the Stretch Code, and on your three projects that you guys are describing. So first, I'm gonna, and these three projects, are they all multifamily? In other words, four units or more, five units or more?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so, oh, I have to figure out how to change slides now. Here we go, probably over here. All right, so that's residential differences. Here's multifamily. So I'll leave this slide up, but I'll talk about the three pieces, and then Bill's gonna jump in to either correct me or collaborate with me. So because these are, these are all multifamily, this is the place where it addresses it, the multifamilies piece. More broadly, these are all for new construction. Anything that's a renovation or a reuse, a rebuild of some kind, that, the Specialized Code doesn't touch it. What the code you currently have right now, the Stretch Code, this latest round, that does touch it. And that's what you're, that's what you're living with and working with right now. The Specialized Code doesn't address it. Bill, will you agree with me on that? You know, the three building skill reuse, it sounds like they're really gonna go down and do a deep, deep retrofit on that. Does that make sense?
You are correct. The Opt-In Code is only for new construction. It does not address existing buildings. So the code that you are under, if you're on Stretch Code town now, nothing's gonna change with those buildings. Even if you elect, you opt in to the new Opt-In Code, it doesn't cover existing buildings, just new construction.
Okay, great. Okay, so Chris, just one question. We have a couple of handstands for clarification. So Cassie, first?
Just quickly, if the buildings are going from being used as schools, and then they're switching to having, like, living in units for the first time, would that count as new construction? Or if they're using the same skeleton of the old building, that still would mean that they're not new construction?
Right now, existing buildings are just covered under Chapter 5 of the ICC. They're not part of the Opt-In Code. Only brand-new construction is part of the Opt-In Code right now.
Okay, great.
Will that change later on down the road? Who knows? But right now, it does not. And it says it right in the code, that it's for new construction only.
Okay, Jamie?
I assume an addition to a new, an addition to an existing building would be, would have to be in the code?
Uh, no, because it's an existing building. So existing buildings, whether you're doing an addition, an alteration, change of use, all those are covered under Chapter 5. If you were doing, like I said, your addition might be needing a HERS rating, depending on the size of the addition and everything. But it's not going to qualify for the Opt-In Code. The Opt-In Code is only when you're starting from scratch.
Okay, so where we have, one of the projects, it's 96 units of new affordable housing. But it's going to be attached to, like, I don't know, a 6,000 square foot festival that's existing or so. Clearly, the, like, the new building is the...
The main feature?
The main feature. The existing, it's an existing historic structure that's being kept for historical reasons. You know, it's an entryway, essentially. I would imagine that that wouldn't be considered existing.
Uh, yeah, because you're doing an addition to an existing building.
Well, Bill, it sounds like they're not. It sounds like they're attaching it to a pavilion. So an open-sided, but an open-sided structure? Is that what you're attaching it to?
No, it's not open. It's a closed building, but it's like, it's like a small, it's like if they're, we're adding 96 units to it, this would be, be able to, a few thousand square feet of space that's, that's remaining from the previous buildings.
So the addition is just much, much bigger than the existing building, the primary state?
There's nothing that deciphers that in that, when you go to the definition section of the code. In addition, it's just a, you're adding square footage to the building, either, you know, up, below, sideways. It doesn't specify that the addition can't be more than the existing square footage. The definition is you're just adding, you know, conditioned space to an existing building.
But if they were separate, then it's not.
Right, go ahead. Thank you.
I mean, I guess it's something you have to, like, really, you know, it's one of those, not a very common case that comes up, but when you go by the definition that's in the code book, you know, it's, you're just adding square footage to an addition, you know, an existing building.
Okay.
That's how they describe it. And again, additions and alterations are covered under Chapter 5, which is for existing buildings.
Great. Great. Thank you for that, Bill. Other clarifying questions? Anyone? Okay, great. Chris?
Yes.
Back to your presentation.
Okay, so I might as well touch base, because you are talking about multifamily at the moment. The Specialized versus the Stretch Code, you can see in the chart up here, so four stories, four plus stories or over 12,000 square feet. If it's an all-electric building, so there's no fossil fuels, no combustion on site, basically, there's no combustion on site. Then your pathway to get there narrows down to passive house. Instead of being a HERS 45 or Teddy, it narrows down to passive house. If you have in that structure, let's say you gave every apartment a gas dryer, then you would have to, then you, it narrows down, now would make you mixed fuel. And again, it would narrow down to passive house, but you would then have to run wiring for an electric dryer when someone wants to replace that at some point in the future, because you don't want to have to open up the walls and run new wiring in order to get rid of the fossil fuel burning item in the future. And that's, that's it for the Specialized Code. That's really the big piece, that's the change for multifamily houses. Bill, can you remind me, just to make sure I'm not making a mistake, I don't think so, but for multifamily, there is no solar that ever gets kicked in here?
Uh, no, actually, you're required to do passive house once your building, multifamily gets to a certain square footage.
Okay.
You're actually required to do it. Let me actually see if I can, while you're chatting, let me pull up that information for you.
And also, so while you're looking for that, Bill, question?
Yeah, just real quick, what's the difference between, under the existing Stretch Code, passive house, Teddy, or HERS 45, or HERS 42? Like, what are these, how much gradations are there between these different metrics?
I'm gonna have to leave that one for Bill.
Give me two seconds, I'll get to passive house thing, and I'll be right with you.
Right. So while Bill's looking for that, I just have another question. So I know you gave the example of the dryer. So if my house is all-electric, but I have a gas stove, what they would have to be able to put in is electric wiring for an electric stove for the future?
Right. Yeah, run wiring, put a plug, and put a plug in, so you can plug your gas, your electric stove in in the future, right?
Perfect, okay.
Yeah. And the one place where a combustion item wouldn't trigger that would be like a wood stove. A wood stove would mean that you are a mixed fuel, but you don't have to run electric wire to the wood stove, because there really is no option.
Right.
You're not gonna put an electric resistance heater, we're not gonna ask you to do that, so.
Unless you had a TV screen with a fire going, then you would have.
Okay. See, while Bill's looking for that, I'm gonna, oops, I'm going in the wrong direction here. I'll go back just real quickly for, you know, for residential in general. This is, you know, the, what I call the cheat sheet, cheat sheet for residential. If you're building an all-electric new home, then once again, the Specialized Code doesn't come into play. That's the first row up there. If you're, it's the Stretch Code is what, what you're going by, and you're going by it, whether it's, whether you're under the Stretch Code or under the Specialized Code. If you have a mixed-fuel home, so it's burning some kind of, there's some kind of combustion on site, then at that point, like we were talking about before, you need to run wiring for electrification. If there's any item inside the house that's under combustion or is using combustion, then it can, has to be, be able to be switched over to electrification. And depending on the size of the building, there's a requirement to put on a certain amount of PV for the vauxhall. And that is qualified by, I'll just jump down on slide. So that's qualified by the solar required when there is a suitable solar roof zone of 300 square feet or greater. So in other words, you don't have to put on solar if you've got a tree shading it, or if you, you know, if you're building a house in a wooded zone, or the house just isn't facing the right direction. We're not gonna force you to take down a tree, and we're not gonna force you to put a solar ray up there with, 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 that's just gonna sit in the shade. But where you can, you have to meet these other requirements. Again, home additions and alterations, second to last row down the bottom, same as Stretch Code. So the Opt-In Specialized Code doesn't come into play. And of course, with mixed-fuel new homes of any size, you can choose the passive house option with wiring for electrification, again. And then historic or existing homes, I think someone mentioned historic, there are Energy Code exemptions if it damages the historic fabric of the building. Maybe I'll just pause there. Instead of, I'm not, I'm not, wasn't ready to come here, but I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate right now, just kind of go through a presentation. I think it's a good idea to just kind of present some slides and see if there's questions.
So for passive house, once your multifamily is greater than 12,000 square feet, you have to do passive house.
Okay.
And there is no renewable energy requirement, but there's still the pre-wiring for electric if you do mixed fuel.
So Bill, when you say over 12,000 square feet, you have to do passive house, is that for the Specialized Code?
Yes.
Okay. Not the case for the Stretch Code?
Nope, Specialized Code.
Right, so that's, that's the one change in the Specialized Code. It narrows your pathway for mixed, for multifamily.
Questions?
Jamie had a question earlier about the difference between HERS, Teddy, and passive house, and the gradations between those three types of things. Like, maybe how much of the league is that you go with?
Yeah, I mean, like, 42 to 45 seems like not that much, but then let's tidy in. Is there, like, does passive house have, like, in COVID, is it like, HERS 80 or HERS 0 or, you know?
Uh, passive house, okay, for, for the Stretch Code, there's two compliance pathways. There's the HERS pathway, and there's the passive house. The HERS pathway, you basically hire a HERS raider that comes in. They'll run a rating based on the plans for the building to make sure it's gonna qualify. You need to get a HERS rating of 45 if you're doing all-electric, and it's a 42 for mixed fuel. So it's like golf, the lower the score, the, you know, the better. I don't play golf, that's the only thing I know about golf, so. You know, don't, don't. But anyway, for the HERS, they have their own software that they use. There's certain nuances with the code. Passive house is different. Passive house, you use specialized software, you need to have a passive house consultant. The passive house right now is the most efficient way you can go as far as building. It's gonna be much more energy efficient than the HERS, which is also very, very energy efficient. You'll see that Mass Save offers some rebates for passive house, because there are some additional costs. But you can heat the house and cool the house for next to nothing. It goes above and beyond, like, what the traditional HERS score does. And the HERS score does a lot, but like, the blower door test for, like, passive house is like .06, air changes at 50, you know, compared to five, you know, between three and five for the regular Stretch Code. So it's a much more energy efficient model, the HERS score.
And T E G I?
Teddy, that is gonna be for multifamily. That's a new compliance pathway that just got into effect. So that's gonna be for commercial applications, not residential.
Multifamily, Bill?
Yeah, multifamily. So once you get to, they're using it not for just multifamily, but also for other types of, like, municipal buildings. And it's a very complex pathway that if you're, really want to learn about it, we actually work with an engineering firm, and we're doing a training on July 30th and August 2nd. It's on the new Teddy compliance pathway and the, oh, what's the other one?
HIGS?
No, it's, I forget the name of it, I blow it every time. But they're new, brand-new, that's for large commercial structures. We're doing it on July 30th from 1 to 3, and August 1st from 1 to 3, on the new commercial compliance pathways. But again, I don't think that's anything you guys are gonna be worrying about here unless you're doing commercial buildings.
Connie?
Family, and it's actually, that's something you probably gotta get corrected here, the new multifamily, four stories and above. We were four stories and above, but they reverted back to three now for multifamily.
Oh, okay.
For residential.
Yeah.
Uh, once you go to four and above, it's considered you build it under the commercial structure. So for something like that, you might use the Teddy. So it's gonna be the number of stories for the mid-rise, low-rise multifamily. Low-rise multifamily, you're gonna be using the passive house or the Ted, or the HERS, depending on the size.
Unless they've adopted the Specialized Code, and then it'll be passive house.
Yep. And then passive house, and actually, let me look here, because I think, um, they're gonna start, let me, um... I mean, so anyway, the passive house is, it's, it's much more, it looks at a lot more things. But it's gonna be much, it's about as energy efficient as you're gonna get if you go passive house. And that's why with multifamily, they're gonna start making it, once you get to a certain size, mandatory. Because you're gonna get the biggest bang for your buck with the passive house.
And it also makes it very appropriate for low income, because you end up with a house with just about no, no energy bills.
Yeah, I mean, there, it's amazing.
It's why, you know, Habitat for Humanity and other, other organizations that are trying to build structures for low-income folks, they, they like the high-efficiency ones.
Yeah, I mean, the, it came up with its name, because just like the, you know, when it first started, it was just like the sun coming through the windows was enough to heat the house up.
Right.
I mean, they're that energy efficient. I mean, it's like next to nothing.
The power goes out for a week, and your, your house maintains temperature.
Yeah, they're really great.
Yeah. Jamie, did you have a follow-up question?
It sounds like the, the HERS is a rating of energy efficiency. And they, you get there by essentially air sealing and making the, the building as tight. you get there by essentially air sealing and making the, uh, the building as tight. Whether, whether as tight, tight a building as possible, but passive, passive house also has like insulation things on top of that. So it's like, it stays cool during the summer and stays warm during the winter. Is it, is that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, there are passive houses, it's a whole different animal, um, when it gets to the stretch code. There are mandatory requirements in our stretch codes. If you're doing a hers rating, you have to follow the mandatory requirements in the code. Um, and then in addition to that, you need to do the EV ready and the solar ready. With passive house, you follow the passive house protocols. Um, and the only thing that you're taking out of the code book or energy code is solar ready and EV ready. Um, you don't bother with the mandatory requirements in the code. It's, it's got its own separate rules. Um, so it really is a much, much more energy efficient, uh, product. But again, you know, there's some additional costs you're going to pay upfront for it, but with your heating and cooling costs, you know, you'll get that back over time and more.
Uh-huh, great.
Masive has rebates.
One of the questions that came up, um, at our last meeting, um, basically was how much is the price differential? If we pass the specialized code, what does that really mean to developers? I am talking about, um, you know, large multifamily construction, but what, what is the, what are we really saying that, what, what, what are we doing to these contractors if we actually pass this in terms of their bottom line? Compared to, to the stretch code?
Um, it's going to depend on what you're doing. So the new opt-in code has three compliance pathways you choose from, and you're the one that chooses from them. Okay? Not the city or the town or the builder. It's like the homeowner or whoever's building the building. So there's the, uh, net zero pathway. Where you're basically generating enough renewable energy to compensate what you're using for, and you're choosing to do that. So you're going to install enough renewable energy at your home. Um, to cover the costs. Okay? So that's something you're deciding to do. So however much renewable energy, that's obviously, uh, an extra cost, but that's something that you're deciding to do. Okay? There's the all-electric pathway. If you do the all-electric pathway, there's no additional costs. Okay? There's no additional requirements after the stretch code if you go all-electric. So again, there's zero cost there for all-electric. If you decide to go mixed fuel, that's where you're going to start to encounter some extra costs. And again, um, for every for, um, gas appliances, for gas heating, or, you know, any kind of fossil fuel, heating, hot water, uh, cooking or dryers. Um, any fossil fuel unit that you put in, you're also going to have to run an additional electric circuit uh, in, in the area too. So if you go like, say, all gas appliances for your heating, uh, your hot water, your cooking and your clothes dryer, you're also going to have to run in four more electric circuits. Or, you know, depending on how many heat pumps you're going to have to put in. So you're going to have to pre-wire the house. You're going to have to put circuits in the circuit box. And then you're going to have to wire them in, um. So right where you have like your, you know, your gas outlet, you're going to have an electric outlet. So if someone wants to take the, you know, gas appliance out, they can put the electric appliance right in. Okay?
Can you speak more about?
The cost of running additional circuits.
Let him finish.
And then for, on top of the, um, the circuits that you have to run, you have to put in a 4 KW, uh, renewable energy system. Okay? Uh, so that's an extra, and this is for mixed fuel only.
Right.
And then depending on the size of your home, if you decide to build a house that's over 4,000 square feet, you have to, um, put in a renewable energy system that will generate the power that you're using, um, off the grid. So that's the big one right there. Um, you know, you could have to up to four different circuits you've got to put in. And then you've got to put in a renewable energy system to power up the house to cover what you're using on the grid. Once you go over 4,000 square feet. Okay?
Right.
But, but the other two, like I said, the op, you know, the net zero one, that's a choice you're making yourself to be, you know, having renewable energy to offset what you're using. Uh, all-electric, there's no cost whatsoever. And, um, mixed fuel, that's reached at incurring some extra costs. So like a 4 KW system, I think they're anywhere from like 11 to $14,000, but then you got to look at the tax credits that you can get to offset that cost. And I think there's also some state, um, uh, rebates you can get also to, uh, offset those costs. But the reason of the opt-in code is to start trying to, uh, and the reason why the hers stuff is going down so low, it's trying to, you know, get people to do all, all-electric rather than mixed fuel. And Masive, uh, going forward, it's not going to be offering any incentives for mixed fuel. Um, it's going to be all-electric and there's some pretty generous incentives to go all-electric. Um, and they're only going to get better. But again, with the opt-in code, it's not that it's going to be a set cost. It's going to depend on what you want to do on the opt-in code. You know, is it just one appliance or is it, you know, those four types of appliances? How big is your house?
Good. So thank you, but just one second. Kevin had his hand up first. So Kevin, did you have a question?
Uh, well, I guess it's less of a question and perhaps it's better kept to the end. I guess you had asked about the builder's point of view. So I was happy to offer that, but, uh, perhaps it's best kept to the end.
Okay.
The question that I was trying to ask more specifically is, um, a larger development, like a developer who is building a, a large building that will have a lot of apartments in it. If, if the specialized code is passed, they will, my understanding is they, they will have to build a passive house. They'll have to do passive house construction as opposed to hers 45 or Teddy. And that's what I'm curious about. Like what is the cost differential for a developer? If, I mean, if we're talking, you know, 100 units if between building a passive or following the stretch code requirements?
Well, I mean, if you, if I may try and add on that, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think one, a privately funded, uh, 100-unit development in East Hampton, I, I'm not sure we have a location that that could ever fit that, just given the, the zoning and such. But, you know, where you, to, to the point of what it does for the cost, should they give an example us, the, you know, construction manager for 47 Cottage. Uh, well, I don't want to speak particularly to their finances, but let's say a similar project would not have happened. Um, it barely happened as it is. We have questions as to coming in July, what that's going to do to development across the state as contractors, uh, and developers were, were very concerned about even the new stretch code. I think if you adopt this, I, I think perhaps the, I very much appreciate Counselor Derby reaching out and, and bringing this to my attention because I think this is probably some of the biggest code changes that East Hampton will have ever seen in my recent memory. If this is to go through, you will essentially, and I don't think this is an exaggeration. Um, you will stop private development. This is going to make it, as the gentleman said, said, you're hearing Habitat for Humanity, folks like Pioneer Valley Planning that are receiving state funding can do this. The, the budgets are, are much different, um, on a private job, given today's construction market and rents, um. I don't think you're going to see anybody develop multifamilies. And I mean, as, as contractors, and I'm doing a few spec homes in East Hampton now, we're hitting hers 52 and it's barely financially viable. Uh, I've talked to many builders. They feel even with the new 45 and the 42, that your margins are going to get so small that this is going to have a huge impact on, on, uh, you know, construction and, and single-family and multifamily homes. I mean, I, I think this is perhaps being downplayed the severity for, um, private development and any stamp that this is going to severely, severely impact any type of private, commercial, multifamily development. If something along these lines is adopted, we simply do not have it in the margins to, to adopt that. I, I know that the comment was made that, you know, you get it back in utility, but the fact is, I would say 95% of private, commercial or residential multifamilies, the tenant are paying those bills regardless. So that's kind of not taken into consideration when you're running your gas flows. The tenants are already paying their electric bill, their heat bills and such. So, you know, that, that, that doesn't really help us, um, you know, uh, this is a pretty big one, pretty, a, a pretty big, uh, change that, that I think will impact us very negatively.
Yeah, i- i- if I could just make it clear, um, um, when I'm talking about the passive house and Teddy, for the, the code, the energy code, um, multifamily, residential multifamily is three stories and below. Okay? So we're talking three stories and below are going to have to use passive house once they get over 12,000 square feet. But if you're talking about a large multifamily that's like four stories and above, you can use Teddy on those. Okay? Because those aren't considered low-rise residential anymore. So we have to take into account like the really, really big ones are going to fall under the commercial program, even though it's a residential building. Um, and you can use the Teddy pathway there.
Bill, are you talking about specialized code or stretch code?
Uh, stretch code, sorry.
Okay, we're, yeah, we're trying to focus on the specialized code here because that's the, that's the difference. They've already got the stretch code. That, that's their, that's their current code.
Yeah. So again, what I said was for residential only, um, the passive house.
Correct.
So with the commercial, um, they could do Teddy as of July 1st.
So just to, just to clarify, so what Kevin is talking about is the stretch code, not the specialized code, correct?
Right.
No, no, that would be the adopted spec. I mean, the stretch code, we have no choice. We're getting into that now. I think that that is already going to make things very difficult for both single-family, multifamily and commercial. But that's the hand we're dealt and, and everybody's making the best of it. Um. The specialized code, I think, is going to, to, to just take it to a new level. For example, we looked at developing, um, I can tell you, you know, firsthand, I, I guess it's no secret at this point, we were trying to pull a deal together at the corner of Union and Main, uh, with that particular, uh, property owner of the former Moriarty Building. And that was just barely financially viable to develop that. Um, if this is adopted, it the new stretch code may kill that project as it is. The specialized code will 100% be the end of it. Um, you know, I just, today we looked at the former, uh, Town Hall, um, had some conversations with Jamie and, and such about that where, you know, that's clearly been on the market for a bit and, uh, you know, we're looking at possibly developing something like that. Now, while I know that that is an existing building, potentially there'd be some detached, you know, I don't really want to get into details, but there's opportunities for other detached buildings and, and other development in that area. Um, they just wouldn't be feasible with this. I mean, I know what construction square foot costs are now. We have a good handle on what they're going to based on our other clients, uh, not our own development on the stretch code in July. And it's just not going to cash flow on these jobs. It, it, it simply won't. And so the only development I can see that will proceed, uh, for some time being until interest rates drastically change and, you know, the housing market changes, but in East Hampton, very much seems against any type of gentrification, and I understand that, but without higher rents, these projects are not going to be viable. You're going to be left with almost nothing but affordable housing or state-funded projects that can afford this type of development.
Yeah, and so I haven't spoken, it started January of this year. Um, all multifamily is passive house. Sorry, you couldn't use a Teddy up until, uh, the beginning of this year. But that did just, uh, that changed. Sorry. Um. So yeah, it is, it's passive house.
Okay, good.
Can I ask Kevin, as someone who knows nothing about construction, did, what the, the price, like with an apartment, like a, a bigger building, um, that would, the passive house would kick in as a requirement compared to the stretch code requirements, what is, how much extra does that cost the developer? What, I just have no sense of that.
Well, for example, on, on 47 Cottage, you would anticipate somewhere around 10%. Um, that, that's what we've seen. And, and the similar on single-family. I mean, I can tell you just from the homes we're doing on Fox Run, just one particular line item currently with the code, you can get away with, you know, we hit a hers rate of 52. It's, you know, good. Is it the best? No, but it makes the home financially viable. That's with that insulation in the walls. To go with just changing to foam to try to get that a little bit better, added around $16,000 for just the single-family home. Now that is only one aspect of this. Uh, we are doing propane appliances, propane stove. If we had to wire every one of those devices, that'd be another few thousand dollars. I mean, so you could take that single-family home on Fox Run and easily add $40,000 to that price. That's no longer viable. It just isn't. And I don't think you're going to, and I don't think you'd get that on the market. So, you know, it affects both the commercial and the residential end.
Kevin, would it be, and would it be fair to say that the cost differential really depends a lot on the construction of the building? If you have, you know, a lot of fancy roof structure of some kind, um, then insulation is going to cost more because you have a lot of details you have to work with. Um, so that if you have, if you're keeping to a fairly simple building, but again, I'm talking about single-family here. And I guess we're not really arguing single-family because all-electric, uh, the specialized code doesn't, doesn't kick in. Um, but multifamily, I mean, is there, are there ways to build multifamily that, um, just won't incur the higher costs, um, by, you know, by building it differently? And unfortunately I don't have these, um, stats on just what cost is going to be for large multifamilies.
I, I am not aware of that. We've been through that on the last couple of projects. I'm actually working on one right now in Hatfield. And unfortunately we're having to go with new code just because we won't be pulling a permit till probably August. And so, you know, it, it hits on almost every aspect. It hits on everything from your wiring to your insulation, which is one, one of the huge ones, uh, air sealing, but more importantly, it hits on the energy efficiency of the mechanical systems. Um, everything from, you know, leakage in the duct to the actual efficiency of the units. That's where it gets wildly expensive. I mean, even in a single-family home, you could spend 10, $20,000 more. For example, in, in Northampton, there's a particular prominent builder that does a lot of this passive homes. I share the same mechanical contractor with them. We spent 50% on our home as to what that particular GC spends on the passive houses for mechanical. Um, I can tell you that's tens of thousands of dollars difference. And the same thing happens in the commercial world where the mechanical systems will go up, you know, 20, 30%. Now, it doesn't drive the whole project cost up 20%, but on average, what we've been seeing is a 10%. So a $7 million project will go to 7.7. I mean, that's been the last several that we've done in the last year, everything from East Hampton to Hatfield. Now, you know, can you swing that in the Boston area? The rents and things make sense there, uh, particular communities? Sure. You know, you have a little bit more margins. This, in, in East Hampton, our, our market is different. And, and on one hand, you have folks that are very upset about the current rental rates and things like that. Well, th- this is going to have the complete opposite effect on, on rents and things like that. It's going to force you to get $25 for a two-bedroom.
So I do want to point out, you've mentioned commercial buildings and then similar to single-family or, you know, one to three unit households, if you're building all-electric, the specialized code won't, won't affect you.
I guess to clarify, a lot of what we're doing is, is mixed use. So, you know, when I'm referring to commercial, I guess it's, it was the mixed use, but also had triggered it for us.
So mixed fuel, it's a mixed fuel, the fact that you're burning, you have a combustion product someplace in the house.
No, I'm a mixed-use property, so it's, it's commercial typically on the first floor, multi on, on the others.
Okay, so, right, because the commercial, I know Bill can chip in on how that makes a difference, but the commercial, as the slide I have up right now, um, it shows that the, uh, the stretch code requirements don't change if you adopt the specialized code, if you're building all-electric.
Correct.
But yeah, it's in a multi.
But mixed use would then trigger that is my understanding. Again, I'm not an ar-
Oh, yeah.
Yes, but the mixed use, so what, what I apologize is when I'm referring to commercial, typically our commercials are mixed use. So for instance, the 47 Cottage we did in East Hampton, you know, we, we consider that a commercial construction project. It is a mixed use primarily multifamily, which then triggered these codes.
So just, just, I'm going to intervene. Do council have any questions?
Um, I think for Kevin, I, I, you know, one of the things I was interested in was if this could potentially impact the, the school projects. And, and I can't remember if you had, if you guys had decided on for the Maple School, if that was, you know, if it was going to be just a reuse of the Maple School building, or if there was going to be potentially a, a detached piece of that as well. So I, I don't know. Um, but I, because I imagine that, that, if there was a detached piece of that and this was adopted, that would have to be passive house. That's what I'm understanding from this. That's what I'm understanding from this.
Yes, Ma- Maple School, now, there hasn't been discussion recently on this, but uh when we were working with them to put together the proposal and such, yeah, the Maple School, there was a strong possibility of having a detached building, which that would affect it. Now, you know, granted, it it, I I don't wanna speak for for Arch Street, but I would say in principle, I don't think on a project that size, that is necessarily gonna make or break the job. I mean, I, you know, and and that is a good example of the type of projects that can go forward or are typically ones receiving state funding. Um, you know, where it becomes tricky for them, and and it's, this is way outside of my wheelhouse, so you'd wanna probably talk with a consultant or but is the historic, because my understanding is that they're going for not only low-income tax credits, but historic tax credits if possible. Historic makes this very difficult because the National Park Service in the past, when we have worked with them, has been really hard on appearance, window appearance, um, solar arrays, things like that. But that's not something I would get into detail about. That that's something their consultants should speak to, but certainly something to keep in mind.
Mm-hmm, good. Thanks for that.
Hey, one other thing to make sure you realize, there's some pretty generous rebates also that are available for our passive house off the Mass Save website. And they start to like pre-construction through the, you know, and certification process. So if you go to the Mass Save website and click on the rebate section, um, and click on multifamily, um, you can get some pretty decent rebates. And next year is the, uh, yeah, three thousand per unit um, rebate. Next year is gonna be the start of the new three-year plan here in Massachusetts. Um, the utilities have to come up with new energy savings plans every three years. And they're actually increasing the budget for Mass Save by almost like a billion uh next year. So I would, since this stuff is gonna be mandatory, and this is kind of the way things are headed, um, you know, trying to build all-electric. I can only imagine the incentives for all-electric are gonna get even better. Um, and also probably for passive house under the new plan. Um, so you might wanna go to the Mass Save website and just kick around uh the rebates and incentive pages just to see what you can get. And back to those buildings that we talked about earlier. Again, existing buildings are exempt from the code, but if you were building a new building on there, then that one building would uh be part of that new opt-in code, cause that is new construction. Um, but again, for historic buildings, all you need to do is get a letter from uh the authority having jurisdiction over it, why a particular measure would detract from the historical significance of the building uh to become exempt from uh the code. So if like windows, you know, new modern windows with the way that they, you know, with the glazing and everything else, the way they kinda like, you know, shine and it does take away from the old-type windows. Um, and people get exemptions all the time um from the code, so that's not too difficult, as long as you have a, you know, a reason why it would detract. And you have to go measure by measure. It's not like a blanket exemption. Um, you'd have to say why certain parts of the code could not be met without detracting from the historical significance.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Uh, Cassie, you got a question?
Well, I I wonder if now is a good time to revisit the idea and the question of of potentially finding the middle ground in terms of adopting, but waiting for implementation, especially as Bill and Chris had mentioned that there would potentially be greater incentives in the future to help overcome the cost of this change in the future. Maybe it would make sense, we can still try to adopt it now, so we can try to go for that climate meter designation, but then not have to be implemented for, I don't know how long we could wait.
It has to be six months anyway.
Well, no, so the question is, it's either the recommendation is six to twelve months, but they did not say required, so the question is, what is required? That, can you answer that question, Chris? Is it required? Is there a certain amount of time required before it goes into effect?
I'd have to get back to you. I mean, I just heard that, you know, the six to, six to twelve months recommended. And most communities that are adopting it, a lot of them are are just implementing it fairly quickly. But six months is more typical than twelve months. Um, so this is the first time I've heard this question.
Is it still to a, um, to still be, if we, so say we chose twelve months and then um it was adopted around this before July twenty-fifth. As long as we have it adopted, that's the requirement we need to meet for application for climate leader, not the having it implemented, correct?
Yes, that is true, yes.
Connie, question?
So I'm looking at um what you have up on the board. It says all-electric homes are generally cheaper to build. That doesn't seem to be Kevin's experience. I'm just curious whether you guys can sort out why the state, the D O E R, is saying that all-electric homes are generally cheaper to build. And I guess, Kevin, why aren't you building all-electric? Why are you using mixed fuel?
Well, I could I could tell you from from our standpoint, that is a a very open-ended and somewhat misleading statement. I- i- yes, an all-electric home is cheaper to build, but that is not the goal. So that that's the problem. So if you were to use an all-electric, say, heat pump that's a lower efficiency and, you know, all-electric appliances and such, but that's not what's driving your money. Um, it's in the high-efficiency systems. It's the higher insulation. It's potentially photovoltaic. It's, you know, the air loss that's allowed in the ductwork, so yes, it doesn't really cost you anymore to build an electric home, but that's not the standard. So that, you know, the two don't really correlate to what they're saying there, to be honest with you.
So an all-electric home, um, I mean, you're assuming you're building the same services into the home, so, and we're assuming you're gonna have air air conditioning because of climate change. It's kind of required nowadays when you're building new. Um, so instead of putting in one, um, instead of putting in two systems, an A C, a central A C system, and then a central heating system, you can put in one system, which does both heating and cooling. Um, and then there's there's the rebates coming in from Mass Save, um, the federal rebates, um, uh, based on the hers rating. Uh, so there's a, there's a lot of support for all-electric. And as Cassie mentioned, you know, support, statewide support, Mass Save support for even high-efficiency gas systems is going away. Uh, so when you combine that all together, the electric is is less expensive. And, um, and Kevin, um, I, you know, I I know there's no really solid study. I can, people can poke holes in each other's study and stuff, but um, I definitely am hearing different numbers for you for single-family houses. That's, you know, the, you know, the 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 increased cost is much lower than the ten percent you're mentioning.
So.
Well, it depends what your starting point is, you know, it depends on where you're, what your hers rating you're starting at. But for example, you know, a- a- again, I'm I'm not debating that an all-electric home with no other metric is the same or less. But where does it take into account that you made the home so tight, you now need an E R V system? I mean, that's a eight to ten thousand dollar system, even in electric, uh, you know, or in residential rather. So that that's a bit misleading of that statement, because it it's, what are the rest of the metrics that you're measuring this by to obtain a passive house or even the higher hers rating? So, you know, again, that's, you know, that's like, I I I don't know how to put it. That's like saying I can buy a, you know, a two-door car cheaper than a four-door. Well, yeah, but what brand, what options, what, you know, that doesn't, it's, that's not a fair comparison. Um, you know, you don't need to have an E R V as of today in in residential. You, you know, you you don't have a lot of that. You can vent your bath fans just traditionally to the outside. Um, you know, the the list goes on and on and on um of those other items, so. Yeah, not.
Yeah, thank you. And Kevin, just, uh, Counselor Smith had a question?
I did. Can you remind me of when the opt-in code will become compulsory?
Well, that'll be your choice. Um.
No, I mean, at this level, is it, are we even there?
Like part of stretch?
But no, the opting, the opting code right now is you'd have to adopt it by a town meeting, vote at town meeting. And when you would, and when the, if the, if when town media adopts it, they they stipulate um a a an activity date or a um an effective date when it goes into effect.
Okay, so. So it's the stretch code that is just about to be coming in.
It is, it's in.
Well, I'm seeing July twenty-fourth there, so I'm talking to.
Yes, there's one, yeah, there's one more change that'll kick in in July, July twenty-four.
Okay, so at that point, I can understand that we just have a little bit of time here. What I'm concerned about is I hear that you say that there's a lot of opportunities for these rebates and everything. But will it ever get to a point where it will, the the last one on that chart to the far right, will become yeah, the specialized code? Will that ever become the part where the state might adopt that as an entire code? Because I I'm hearing two stories. On the one hand, it's like, well, we're eventually gonna have to do this anyway, so we might as well do it. And the other, that we have no timeline at all. So if we're telling everyone, okay, let's do this, and you can get these special, special um incentives. What if those incentives go away in a year and it turns out that it's not gonna be another ten years until this, the state requires that? What would be the worst-case scenario for East Hampton in that case?
So if if the state just pulled all incentives and, you know, let's say, start giving incentives again for gas, uh, gas, gas furnaces and stuff. The town can vote to rescind the str- the specialized code. You know, if it gets, if it gets drastically bad, which I don't expect it to, Massachusetts is very dedicated, um, very strongly um moving to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um, so I I I fully expect the incentives actually get stronger for the all-electric and, you know, and and the and the building code in general. But, um, um, but if it does go the wrong direction, then then your bailout plan is you can rescind it. Um, when they, when they say that, uh, you know, the current code is gonna meet specialized code coming up, I think what they would be refer- referring to is like right now, this little, the chart I'm showing right here, the second to left, uh, second to right group of um, of the bar charts, twenty-twenty-three. You can see your base code has got to meet effectively a fur- hers rating of fifty-five in gray. The uh stretch code has to hurt read a a hers fifty-two, that's one in blue. And right now, if the uh opt-in code, the specialized code was in effect right now in your town, then you'd be building to a forty-two. In July of twenty-twenty-four, the base code, I'm not sorry, not the base code, the stretch code is gonna drop down to that forty-two. So that's the one piece that's going to where the stretch code's actually gonna catch up to the specialized code. Um, with that said, that's only one piece of the specialized code. Um, the rest of it, we've been talking about, you know, the hers rating, uh, is you 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 could be ahead of the curve if you adopted it and had it go into effect before July of twenty-twenty-four. But that's not gonna happen. Um, you know, you're gonna put it into effect after that, and so the stretch code is already gonna be dropped down to that level anyhow. I hope I didn't confuse things. That was a little confusing topic to try to talk about.
Follow-up question?
Yeah, um, I have another follow-up, because I know you had said that, I don't know who said it, that if we were going to have huge neighborhoods coming in, that this would really, I I think it was um Kevin was was talking about that, that if we had a large neighborhood, that this would actually cause a lot of um gentrification. Um, but what I'm seeing is that there's a lot of discussion about having, for example, um, a, a single unit add-on, what, I always get that term wrong. Yeah, an accessory dwelling. Can you just address if any of this will eventually be applicable to accessory dwellings? Or are those still considered too small?
Well, if it's, if it's an add-on to a building, then the specialized code won't affect it.
This would not add to a building. This would be someone drop, putting a small building in their yard. That would be a very small apartment that they would be building from scratch, so.
Eleven hundred square feet.
Okay, so in that case, you know, if it was an all-electric building, then the specialized code wouldn't have any effect on it.
Mm-hmm.
This would be the the residential low-rise.
Mm-hmm.
If you're building all-electric, doesn't matter the size of the house, um, specialized code wouldn't affect it. And and assuming if you do a small little building like that, that's exactly what it would be.
Mm-hmm. Jamie, you had a question?
You're good, okay.
Can I say, my understanding is that there are gonna be some changes to the code, like in July. It is, and do you know anything about that and and what those changes are likely to be?
The stretch code?
Yeah, to the stretch code, yeah.
Yes.
Heres rating.
Yep, yeah, it's just, it's that hers rating dropping down that I I mentioned before.
I'm sure there are gonna be other changes being that they're discussing, but that's not true.
So there, there, the D O E R just had a listening session, um, and they're kinda going through all the responses and stuff right now. And let's see, so then now, now this doesn't have to do with the specialized code.
No, no.
You know, be really clear. This doesn't have, this has to do with the stretch code, which you're already operating underneath, under, under. Um. So, um, hmm, this email just came in that they're reviewing the public comments. Think we can share that we expect to revisit the hers numbers for alterations and changes of use or additions. So they may tweak just what you have to bill to if you have an addition or an alteration. Um, but that's got to do with the stretch code. Again, it's not the specialized code. This is already locked in. Um, that might be changing. I don't think it's gonna be July necessarily. No, and this is, you know, it's, it's, I was just given permission. I think we can say that, so they're still mulling it over, but that's what they're going for. They're aiming for. And I'm not sure if that gets to your question.
Uh, Council Dervy had a question?
So I just have, um, and I think this could potentially go to multiple places, but if we did adopt the opt-in specialized code and we decided to go outside of the recommended, and we said we were gonna do eighteen months to see what was gonna happen. Um, A, who would we, you know, who who would say, no, eighteen is too long? Is that the D O E R?
Um, I believe it would be, yep.
Okay, um, and and are they paying attention to that, I wonder? Um, and then, and B, Kevin, do you think if we extended the time beyond a year out, do you think that that would give uh, you builders enough time to settle in with the um, the new stretch code and to see what's on the horizon for the opt-in specialized code? So if we were getting to that point, we could make a decision, um, as we came to the the, you know, inception point, whether it was gonna work or not. Do you think if it was, you know, twelve to eighteen months, do you think that that would be enough time for builders to have um, experience with the new stretch code and and to see what potential of the opt-in code would be?
Um, I mean, I hate to be a negative Nelly, but honestly, no, just because of the timeline and the and the lifespan of a project is especially larger ones is is much, much longer. For example, you know, I'm not sure if the folks and and, you know, it's a con- controversial project, so maybe there's nobody concerned. But that we're doing the Tasty Top development, like, are they even aware of this? I mean, that something like this would impact them huge, and obviously you can see the lifespan of that project that's been going on for years and will go on from years to come. I mean, my opinion, obviously, is just that, but I I would love to have you guys really reach out to, you know, builders, architects, anybody, uh, ho- home builders, uh, folks like Dave Hardy, like, get get people's opinion on this and more than just mine. And and see, especially the developers, you know, folks like the Patel's and things, and Boyle's who have done a lot in the community. Um, I I would really, really recommend that, you know, it it's one thing to wait for the state, and when we're all on the same playing field, because every single town in Massachusetts has adopted this, or the town has mandated it. You know, then i- it's gonna affect home prices, rents, everything across the board equally. I don't personally know that this is something, that this is the time to be on the, on the forefront and cutting edge in in East Hampton when we're fighting, you know, increasing rents, uh, corruption rents are going up, um, you know, and and we're looking, we have parcels even specifically downtown. There's three alone at the end of Main Street at the Rotary Parcels that are really ripe for development, that this is gonna negatively impact. So I I would say give the stretch, let the stretch code happen in July and give that a year or two before even thinking about anything like that. But, you know, that's just my opinion, but I'd love for you to hear from other developers who have done things in the community.
So I I I just wanna mention, just because it's a, it's a data point, that we currently have forty-one communities that have adopted the specialized code um, in Massachusetts. You can see the map up there. The darker colored blues are the ones that have adopted the specialized code. The light blue is the stretch code, and the off-white is the base code.
Um, Chris, can you just say, is it Amherst, Northampton and?
Hatfield.
Hatfield, so that, those are the three Western Mass?
Asheville.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Asheville, Amherst and?
Northampton, it looks like.
Yep, Northampton, yeah.
So I would like to reach out to those communities just to see impact, but that's just my initial thinking right here. Other thoughts, questions?
Just, um, timelines, so you said July?
July 25th.
July 25th. Uh, so let me just, let me just look really quick here. So July 25th would put us at, um, so we have a meeting on the 24th, no, I'm sorry, the 17th. Um, we have a meeting July 17th. So I mean, we have a little bit of time, like, you know. We do have a meeting July 17th, which would put us under the, so I think, I mean, I think that it probably makes sense, just from my perspective, to do a little bit more due diligence, like, it doesn't seem like the rush is intense as, um, oh wait, I'm sorry, wait, but July schedule is a little different.
Right, we don't have two meetings.
We might only have one, the.
But clarification, do we have to pass this with the planning board also?
No, I don't believe opt-ins, uh, because it's not a zoning change, that, that would only, that would figure the.
I, I just want to make sure that we are not like, whoops.
Yeah, yeah, but.
No, it has, it has to go to, um, a town meeting or city council.
City council, okay, so I just want to make sure that.
July 20th is the deadline to submit to the climate leader designation, and what does that constitution look like?
My understanding, there's a, there's a number of criteria that need to be proven to be met. Um, and I'm sure, Chris, you can jump in, but my understanding is we, we've met a number of the criteria or in mind to meet a number. And one is to have an energy advisory committee, which we have. Another one is to have a, um, a declaration of, of dedication that we are going to try to be net zero by 2050, which the Climate Action Plan will serve as that, and it just needs to be explained to the mayor, including that Climate Action Plan. Another criteria is to have a roadmap for municipal buildings only on, uh, how we will over time convert them to be net zero. That would involve like, okay, so for this building, we have this kind of hot water heater and at this stage it's gonna become, yeah, that's the time when we would normally replace this one. At this time, we're replacing with this thing, and so it's a little more detailed. Um, Weston Simpson, who helped us develop the Climate Action Plan, has agreed to have that be an appendix to the Climate Action Plan.
I think that's already being done through the Honeywell program.
It mostly has been, yes, and so there's a lot of data from that, and so, but it's just gonna be in the format that D O E R wants, to meet that criteria. Another criteria is, um, adopting a zero emission first vehicle policy, which is very similar to what we already have.
Which is what we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna talk about it, but basically that just lays out, uh, I think it'd be quite easy to adopt in that
it's what we already have because of a little green community, but it lays out more explicitly kind of the order operations, as it were, for choosing a new vehicle. Um, and then, yeah, the last one would be adopting the specialized code, uh, as we're discussing right now. I think, Chris, did I miss anything or was that it?
I'm double checking, um, uh, yeah, the only thing you missed was being a green community and good standing.
Right, which we have. Question is then, you have all of those things in place that you're already getting done, and this is the one kind of catch that we need to make a decision on and hopefully we'll continue to, to speak to folks and to get that information, right? So you're gonna continue to work on that and put that together and then we'll do our part in terms of reaching out to some of these additional, um, communities to see impact, uh, on them.
And I also think what Kevin said, it was checking in with the Boils and the Patel's also to, just to, they've done so much development in East Hampton.
Absolutely.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Um, yeah, okay.
Okay. Other, and the other one question that we had, and Chris, you mentioned that you could get that for us, was how long could we stretch out that?
Implementation.
Implementation.
How long can you stretch before you do the specialized code?
Uh, yeah. Um, so that we can make sure that we get the, uh, climate leader designation, um. So I, I think we want, I think what we're all concerned about is, one, making sure that we don't price out our residents, um, making sure that East Hampton remains affordable, um, but also we don't want to limit the opportunities of builders who are coming into our community to, to do business, so to speak, but also provide homes for, um, people who are interested in, in having those. Um, so that would be great, uh, Chris, if you could help us to, to get that information, um, and you've been in communication with Cassie, uh, as is, so that would be great if, as soon as you could get that, then Cassie, you could share that with the rest of us. Any other questions, anything?
It looks like, um, Northampton became effective with the opt-in specialized energy code on January 1st of 2024. Um, so if there's any developers who have already started to work on projects in Northampton, it might be helpful.
That's it. Yep, yep.
Touch base with them, especially if they've been there before and thereafter.
Yeah.
That'd be good to know.
Yep, so I'll, I can reach out, or someone else can reach out, but I'm happy to do that as well. Great, thank you.
Any? I will add in that, um, you know, once this, once this specialized code goes into effect, if you've gotten a permit before that, then you're working on, under the stretch code. So, you know, it's when you land that permit, so there's a lot of projects that, you know, could be already locked in before the specialized code goes into effect.
Right, okay, great, and Cassie had a comment?
The last thing I wanted to do, it does sound like one of the main, big question or topic discussion of the last meeting was how it affects these affordable housing projects and the current projects that are really important that are kind of quasi underway. And it sounds like potentially that, yes, this wouldn't be like a showstopper for those projects to be disinterested in.
Great, yeah, particularly the buildings that are being the older buildings that are being renovated, right? So I think that those are.
Right, that wouldn't affect that at all.
Yeah, and that's great.
So good, and, and single family under 12,000 square feet isn't affected.
If it's a new. If it's all electric.
It's all electric, yeah.
I'll send Cassie the slides. Actually, I, actually, Cassie, I think you already have them.
I have, yeah, 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 thank you. Awesome, well, thank you so much, uh, appreciate your, your input here and, and thoughts and also how this impacts you, right? Like Kevin, I, I wanted to know that we, we heard what you had to say tonight and I think that that's really important information that, that I think the three of us certainly and the rest of, of, um, of, uh, not only, um, employees of the city, right? But volunteers of, of our various, um, committees, I think, really have taken to heart and, and see the impact that this could have on, on you and, and your business.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
Yep, awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks for your deliberations, yes.
Yes, right.
Best tradition.
And another good conversation we had tonight, so, good. Um, so this is something we'll come back to, um, and we'll set another meeting, um, and I think yeah, if we could set one sooner than later, I think that would be great, that we can continue to move forward so that we can help Cassie, um, you know, move forward with, um, her, her efforts. Um, great, so the other question, topic that we have is, um, the vehicles, uh, you all are welcome to stay or you can also hop off too, so it's up to you.
All right, we'll head out, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate you.
You know, seven, eight. Yes, I'd say, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris and Bill, really appreciate you.
Right, have a great day.
All right, you too.
Um, do you need, uh, Cassie, do you need me on for the, for the vehicles?
You know, because Chris is also familiar with the requirements for that, um, it might be helpful to, if you guys have particular questions about it. The biggest question that I had, which I spoke with Chris about earlier, not to dive too much into it, I was kind of answered. So if, if you guys feel like you wanted to stay, just in case you have other questions, for you, but.
Okay.
I don't have a ton of questions after reading it and.
Okay, great, so I'm gonna share my screen. Oh, boy.
Do you, do you need me to stay or not?
Sure.
Jamie, do?
I'm okay with Chris leaving, it's only to guess that anticipate having many questions about it.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate you.
Okay, take care.
All right. All right, um, can we, can we all see this? Okay, great. So this, I believe the mayor, Cassie, and councillor Zerit worked on to submit. Um, and basically this is, this was before my time, so this is, I guess, changing the, um, purchase of fuel-efficient, uh, vehicles, to my understanding, the, the, uh, previous, um, uh, ordinance, uh, was a little bit more vague, and so.
It was before there was electric vehicles.
Right, okay, perfect, right? So, and you would know this because you've been here forever, right, there you go. Uh, maybe I should turn this over to you, uh, and so here we're providing some definition as well as providing some guidelines around kind of what that order of purchase looks like, um, et cetera, so not to turn it over to you, but you were instrumental in kind of writing this and this also is to meet the needs of, for, um, the, um, climate leader, uh, designation, so, um, why don't you walk us through this?
Yeah, so basically, like you said, because we're a green community, we have to have this policy, vehicle, fuel efficient policy in place for vehicle purchases, uh, underneath the criteria of being a green community. The change is that this specifies zero emission vehicles first, which most commonly translates into a battery electric vehicle. But then it's saying, so, say the city was gonna buy a new car for DPW. If DPW wants to do that, they should research vehicles that would be zero emissions first. They can't find any that meet what they need to do in terms of performance and feasibility and like one that would actually make sense for their department, then they should check to see if there's any plug-in hybrids. If they can't find any plug-in hybrids, then they should check gas hybrids. They can't find those, okay, then the one, the most fuel-efficient combustion engine would be one they should go with. And basically, they need to just explain why, to say it's like, it's just not, a good example might be for the police force. They have very specific crash safety ratings that they should be meeting. The vehicles need to be safe, they need to be able to have performance standards in terms of speed and response. Um, they could explain, hey, there is an electric vehicle on the market that maybe could be used as a police cruiser, but look, it doesn't meet these safety and performance ratings that we need, so that's why we're not going with that one. But we did find a cool hybrid one that meets all these things, sorry about that. Um, that's my understanding of how it would work, which is very similar to what we have in place now, it just says that it should be the most fuel-efficient vehicle and we said that. Um, so this, yeah, it gives it more explicit. One thing that I had discussed, um, in terms of the, the definitions portion, which is very helpful, um, one of the definitions that was included in here, which I think might just be the alternative fuel vehicle versus the, um, well, I think there, I thought there was a zero emission vehicle definition that was on there. Um, but I would want the zero emission vehicle definition to be kind of broadened, because right, my understanding was in the language that we just pulled from a model that D O E R put out to meet this criteria, that's basically what you're seeing here. Um, and it goes on below, there's more to this, uh, these are just definitions, but for the definition for the zero emission vehicle, I wanted it to say explicitly, which include battery electric vehicles, hydrogen-powered vehicles, or any other technology that may become available, which does not result in the use of fossil fuels.
Mm-hmm.
Just so that we're kind of keeping it open for who knows what they could develop in the future. Um, in my mind, I'm thinking about for those larger vehicles such as like a fiber truck or something, or a school bus, maybe there would be hydrogen-powered ones that would come out for whatever reason, or financially feasible, or just a direction that makes more sense for us to go, I want to make that possible. And when I spoke to Chris Mason over the phone earlier today, he was like, that is the intent, it's just, I don't care if it's battery electric, just that it doesn't have fossil fuel emissions. Um, so that was something I just thought would be important to kind of tweak potentially the language of the definitions in that way. Uh, that may not have made it into this most recent version that you have received.
Okay, great, so if I understand you want to add a zero emissions definition?
Correct.
And we would, in terms of the ultimate fuel, you would want to add hydrogen, anything?
I would, I would scroll that, maybe the ultimate fuel definition is fine, I just want to see.
I don't, I didn't see it, oh, I see.
See, the ultimate fuel vehicle, it's at the top because it's medical, but the, it's mentioned as like the second or last option of a type of vehicle to search, because you kind of go into this hierarchy, ultimate fuel, you know, biodiesel and propane will have emissions. So that's why it's mentioned there as number three, vehicle or alternative fuel.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
Better than it could, uh, carbon gas using vehicle, but, um, it's number three. So I was hoping to do for number one, instead of battery electric vehicle, the zero emission vehicle, and it had the definition be battery electric or these other things that don't use fossil fuels.
Okay.
That's what I'd change, that would, I would want to do.
So would we add, so would we add another one or would that just be modified, okay?
Okay, to zero emission and battery would be one of the.
Okay, great, so do you want to work on this and then?
Sorry, I'll get the language, I can have that for the next meeting if that's easier.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think we would necessarily need a next meeting if we could agree on that.
Yeah, no, I think that that's fine, I, I, we could, um, we can vote on this with the amendment to come, right? I think that's fine, um, I just wanna kind of go through the rest of it too, because there are some additions and uh, whatnot, so if you wanna kind of keep walking us through, yeah, um.
So I think of one thing that, uh, is important, I would judge it's bold and there, which is helpful, is again, that point that this policy shall not require a department to take any action which conflicts with local, state, or federal requirements, nor mandate the procurement of products that do not perform adequately for their intended use, exclude adequate purchasing competition, or require the purchase of vehicles that are not commercially available or practical. Because I wanted to talk to all the department heads, seemed like would be most impacted by this. Um, I think it was really important to do that and, uh, it seemed like that piece was an important piece to making sure that they could still do what was best for their department. Because there certainly is no, no one who's like, I just don't want to do a fuel-efficient car, you just save money, like, there's no opposition in that way, but it is, they didn't want there to be something, I think reasonably so, that would impact their performance and their ability to do, they serve the critical functions that they serve.
And that's always the way it's been implemented, um, the way that we've done it, uh, I would say that, but I'm looking down here, it, it would, if we did that change, it would say the fleet policy is a zero emission first.
Yes, yes, I agree, we need to change that over there as well.
So it would just, like, if we changed that first one, we would just have to go through and make sure that we
Oh, I see, okay.
Continue it through the rest of the document.
Yep.
So that could be like, and where it says all electric, you could say all zero emission, electric, hybrid, or alternative.
Okay, anything? Else?
So all the text that you see that it's involved, the stuff that's been added, we saw what was there. Um, and then, yeah, there's a mention of the, the city shall produce and maintain an adequate infrastructure of electric vehicle charging equipment uh, to meet the needs of man's electric fleet, so it's another important piece, um, that we need to keep up with that, I think, in terms of making sure that we can actually charge vehicles that we get if we're switching that way.
Mm-hmm. Um. There's discussion of putting a canopy or something, right?
That's part of it, well.
Yep.
Um, the every term piece, that's every two years.
Mm-hmm.
Seems, um, unnecessary, to be completely frank. Uh, you know, I, we review our ordinances every 10 years. Um, you know, I, I I don't know if we're gonna see a onslaught of zero emission vehicles that are outside of what we know to exist right now in two years.
Or even 10.
Or even 10, um, I just don't, I just like, it's just one of those things that we're gonna say that we're just not gonna, it's not gonna happen. And I don't want to put things into ordinance that we're not gonna, because you, like, so, I, I just want to put that out there.
Yep, so.
That seems like excessive.
Question, so is that a criteria of this, that there is a review of policy?
Um, just check really quick, if you don't mind to bear with me, that, because I think, I don't know if that was, I was working with, um, city councillor Zerit, um, in trying to write this language, I don't know if that was an addition that he made in terms of making that term, or if that was something that was in the original language.
Yep.
But if.
It wasn't in the original language, because I wrote that.
No, 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 I mean, the, the draft language that you.
Oh, the draft.
I thought, yes, yeah, um, but if you, yeah, yeah.
You wrote it.
Yeah.
To be completely right, for the first 10, maybe more years, it did not get implemented, because basically departments would be like, you know, police would be like, oh, we meet certain cars and these don't fit our.
Yeah.
I think the important thing to mention is that. I think the important thing to mention is that police, cruisers specifically, and a lot of, certain, many service, uh, emergency service vehicles were exempt underneath the green community criteria.
Right.
That exemption is gone away. Yeah, even if we don't come a climate leader, that exemption for at least police cruisers has gone away after like twenty-six.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't take anything out that's.
I mean, if it was that, then if, if that was like a requirement, then whatever we do, but I just, I just think it's one of those things that got put in to, you know, look good, but it's not going to happen.
Sure.
Let's see.
That makes sense.
I'm trying to see if I can.
I do agree that it should be updated, like, you know.
Sure.
Probably from the executive office, because the procurement branch and they, like, they're the ones that are going to be implementing this. You know, it makes more sense for them to, you know, have some sort of process in place to ensure that it's being implemented correctly and it doesn't need any changes. And if it did, they would come to the city council and say, hey, we need to update this or.
I think part of that has to do with technology is changing so rapidly, right? I think it's just, uh, we need to stay up to date and not just take things for granted of being done. But, um, uh, councillor Smith, do you have any questions at this point regarding this?
Regarding the, the.
Yeah.
I don't see anything here in this draft language that is submitted about term of review or anything like that. So, um, I feel like if you guys want to reset it to something else.
Okay.
If you have a problem, I can double check.
So just.
But, um, yeah.
So this would just be a standard review with, uh, ordinance.
I mean, it could, I mean, or it could just say, you know, the council show review, um, the ordinance, um,
As needed.
Without a timeframe, as needed to whatever, right? I think that would make more sense for me. As I go.
Theory, yeah.
And, and, um, and I think with those other changes, I, I'm, I feel good about this and I'd be happy to put a motion forward.
Okay.
I, I move that we send, um, the fuel efficient vehicle ordinance to the full council as amended.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes three to zero. Yeah, so we'll, we'll do that at the next meeting. So it'll be the first meeting in June. They will, we'll do that. Um, and also I'll reach out to you to amend this so that we're ready to go and we can submit that in the, for the next. Uh, we'll, we'll set the public hearing at the next meeting for the, right, to be done at the following meeting. So I'll reach out to you for that. All right, cool. Anything else that, that we need to discuss that was on our agenda this evening?
Yeah, so that's on the back, but I said I was going to call the firms about the
Oh.
Pelleted waste. You're like, what are you talking about?
I, I have spoken to, um, Laura Fisher and she has some thoughts on that. So I, I've been in communication with her, but.
We still need to get JP in and tell us where it came from.
Right.
So.
That's a thing. Um, great. Any, anything else for the good of the order? Great, so I will. Before I even said that. All right, so motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Um, great, awesome.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.